Please rise for the pledge.
To the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Cecily, roll call please. And just as, I'm sorry, Angela, roll call please. And just as a reminder, we've had some people suggest that we need to lean into our microphones during during our meetings. So if everybody could just make sure you're close to them, that'd be great. Counselor Osberger?
Present.
Counselor Bronson? Counselor Hegi?
Here.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
President Protem Thorstad?
Here.
Mayor Coleman? Present. And can you call Counselor Bronson's name again? Counselor Bronson? There we go. We have seven present and zero absent. Going to pass this off to city manager.
Right.
I don't have to say Protem.
Yeah, it's kind of weird. Good evening, councilors. So this work session, as you're aware, we're going to continue with goal setting. And I just want to thank you all for all of the hard work you did with this. There's a lot of good stuff up there, as well as I wanted to thank staff for their input this last couple of weeks, as well as Cecily, who did a lot of heavy lifting for this. You'll see there is a memo here in front of you that addresses these things that are left on our, all of our goals. And so what we're going to do now is narrow this down a little bit more so that when staff works on these things throughout the year, it's something manageable, something that we can, you know, make steps towards and achieve. And so what we're going to do is you have the little stickers there in front of you. And we're going to spend some time here in the next several minutes going around. And you're going to take two stickers with your color and put them on in each one of those categories. So you're going to pick two from each category. And you cannot put two stickers on the same, like, for example, for monthly newsletter, you have to choose two separate ones in there. And then what we will do is we'll take the two highest number of stickers in each one of those categories and use those for our council goals this next year. And so there should be about 10 goals. And that seems to be probably a manageable number for us. One of the things I did want to say is that even though there may be goals on here that are not in the top 10, it doesn't mean that staff is not going to work on some of those things. So I just want you all to know that we're still going to continue to, you know, make steps towards some of these things that are really pretty important for us. So with that, does council have any questions?
I do have a few questions regarding some of the costs that were listed on some of these items. And I just wanted to clarify, just to help me make my own decision or have my own vote on these things. The monthly newsletter, I see that there's costs associated with certain mailers. Is there any cost associated with staff time or regarding databases? I know in my own work that we send out a lot of emails, but we have to make sure we've got a database that tracks unsubscribes. And I didn't know if our system does that.
So this is a little bit different if we went through utility billing. Basically, that that staff would have to run a report. So for example, let's say we wanted to save costs by separating out those that have opted into electronic only versus those that are still having the mailer. That would require staff time to reconcile those two lists. I don't know what that would estimate out to be, probably an hour or two. But yes, there would be a staff cost associated with that. And then obviously, anytime we're generating new content, there's staff time to generate that.
Yeah, I was wondering more about the who's writing it and the time that it takes to gather that together. But also just tracking if somebody's like, I don't want to receive your newsletter. We have to honor that because there's federal laws involved in that. So, okay, just curious. And then the other one I had questions regarding is, where is it at? The paver thing, there's costs I see that are associated with the actual machinery, but there's going to be other significant costs?
Yes. So my understanding from staff is we would need a crew of likely three additional public work staff, plus training, plus paying for their CDLs if they don't already hold them. And then whatever the training with that program would be, if we would need to send them somewhere, if that's something where we'd have to bring someone in.
And I wanted to say thank you for doing the homework on finding out what other cities, if any, own their own paver and roller. And did you find any? Because?
So Director Freeman was actually the one who did that research for us. And I think you just reached out to Lebanon and Albany so far, right?
Correct. And both of them just kind of had, as I had mentioned before, they just do maintenance to maintain water cuts, roads that are failing or something. They don't do any major construction. They rely on contractors through bidding process.
And did they explain why?
It's just too costly, the equipment, the maintaining, the having the amount of employees it's going to take to do it. And the dump trucks, you know, lined up when you start paving. We just don't have the funds in the transportation fund. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from councilors?
Yeah, of course, I'm going to interject on the paving issue. You can hire trucks through Knife River, or you don't need to have a CDL driver. They are paid by the hourly rate or the load. So I want to push back a little bit on that. I don't think that it's comparatively trying to raise the money to get an overlay that's been told to us in the past, millions of dollars. This is $100,000. I just, a little bit frustrated with. I understand that it's more work. I understand that we need to hire additional staff. But it's, an overlay is pretty simple. So we paid three times the amount on a project that we did on Mandina to a contractor versus what we could do it for in-house. So. And I am, I am or was a paving contractor, had roller, paver, trailer, dump trucks, hired the people. The laborers are hard to find, I understand, and it's seasonal work. But it is, I do not believe that it's more costly than putting it up to bid.
And I think you have a point where, yes, if you're able to maintain an in-house program, you are likely going to see some cost savings. But I know specifically with Lebanon, part of their challenge is because they also have limited funds to do streets projects throughout the year, they don't have enough funding to do enough streets projects to maintain the skill level for a crew to be in-house. So that's the other challenge, is making sure that even if we could afford the startup costs and the ongoing salary and benefit costs, that we have enough work that they are able to execute it correctly the first time. And again, that's just based on the conversation with Lebanon.
So in Senator Hayden's office, there are cities that have come to him saying that, how do we get our streets paved? And so suggesting that they do it in-house was like a light bulb moment because you have a significant amount of savings. And Mayor Coleman said at one time that the street repairs were the biggest concern. So I just, I hear what everybody is saying, that it's, we're priced out of whatever. But I, I don't know how else we're going to get our streets done. We don't have money to pay for a contractor to do it. And we don't have money to do it in-house. So when is anything ever going to get done? Like, you have to come up with some creative solutions to try to fix the problem. And that was a creative solution.
Any other questions of councilors?
I have one question.
You're good.
This will go back to our maintenance.
Could you move your microphone a little closer, Counselor Bronson?
A little closer, hear me now, okay. You know, we talked about the amount of funds that are available each year. And as part of our, you know, 20-year plan, could you refresh us on that? How much is that approximately a year? Do we have the work with that? We have to cover the maintenance of the streets and, you know, the available money that comes from, you know, the sources, the gas tax and usage, you know, new housing starts and such. You know, we don't have much to work with because over 20 years, we're looking at three and a half million ballpark. So.
Are you referencing the the needs in the TSP or which which piece are you, are you asking?
How much dollars we have available per year for street maintenance?
Well, so my understanding, if I recall correctly, and I don't have it in front of me, I do think we we bring in between 800 and 900,000 annually through the gas tax, which is what is dedicated to streets. But obviously, a large portion of that is going to salaries and benefits. That's just the nature of it. And so there, there is not a whole lot left over annually to do actual street projects.
And that's not a whole lot. Just ballpark what that is. I know it's not that much.
It's not. So I know this past year, let me just pull it up. We had budgeted 345,000 for potential streets projects. We have not spent all of that yet, but that was, that was the budget for capital outlay.
And essentially have a whole system for paving and a crew to run that for paving. That's not going to be cheap. So I could see where it's going to be a real challenge. And if a bigger city like Lebanon, or even larger city like Albany is not doing it in-house, then it seems like a tough stretch for Sweet Home Bill before they do that.
And just by way of comparison, again, in the budget this year, in the same fund, we budgeted 322,000 for wages.
Okay. Thank you.
I had another question regarding cost on another item. And that was the Weddell Bridge repair. Within the cost that were estimated by Lynn County, the restoration at 340, is that something that can be, we can work with volunteers in the community or donations? Or what are the restrictions regarding that kind of?
So part of the challenge with Weddell is because it was relocated to Straddle Ames Creek. There are a lot of DEQ restrictions. So there is probably a very limited amount of labor that could happen on that bridge just due to the permitting processes, at least that's my understanding. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Absolutely, donations would be fantastic, whether it's material or money. Money is obviously the easiest for us to work with in terms of flexibility. But I would think that there would be some pretty limited opportunities there.
Okay, that's helpful to know. Thank you. Any other questions of councilors?
Just real quick, I have one. Back to the paver, and this might not even be worth asking, but is there any potential for us, if we had a crew, you know, we put in the time, put in the money for us to do work for, say, Lebanon, if they needed it, just to raise it, you know? The fire department, it's got a great program, you know, where they're partnering with the national parks or with the firefighting stuff. So that's just an idea.
I am not enough of an expert on contracting law to be able to answer 100% affirmatively. It's certainly something we could look into though, as an option.
Question. Old City Hall. I see that we have significant challenges with City Hall and the cost to renovate the building to get it up to code. I'd like to see this as one of the 10 options for us to accommodate or to get done this year. Just FYI.
Any other questions? Okay, we will take the next several minutes, however long it takes. You can bring your memos with you to refer to some of the stuff that staff had put in there as far as input. And go around and put your two stickers on each one of the white sheets, and then we will go from there. It's like everyone's done. Thank you. Okay, so we'll go around, looks like our, under efficient government, our top ones are increased electronic communications to citizens as well as the cybersecurity review of key infrastructure. So for the increased electronic communications to citizens, I just want to give council a chance to discuss and ask, like, what are we wanting to see specifically? Does anyone have any ideas there that they want to communicate to staff as we kind of look forward to working on that?
Um, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
For the increase or communications or whatever, what about like more Facebook stuff?
That can be certainly, yeah. That can be part of that, yeah.
Did we, did we ever get actual pricing on something that's app-based?
We did at one point. I can't recall what the number was. But in lieu of that, we opted to, we're going in the, through the middle of an upgrade to our website that will at least include a text messaging feature, which is new.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I mean, not saying no names, but there's a place here in town, it's a little restaurant that has an app for all of his customers. And I love it. So I think the city could implement something like that. People can sign up for.
Okay, something we can look into again.
So, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
So if we're not going to send out a monthly newsletter, I'd like to see the increased electronic communication. And one of the things that we do in campaigns is we send out text messages. And it's fairly inexpensive, probably significantly less than a monthly newsletter. And so sending out a quarterly text message of what's been going on, or here's the hyperlink to where you can find out more information or whatever. I think that that would be good, too.
And just to confirm?
Especially if, well, I don't know if we're going three or more, I guess we're not doing a PR campaign. Okay.
And just to clarify, the upgrade to the website, when, that will include people being able to opt into text messages. When will that be, or the estimates on when that would be up?
So we just had a change in project managers. So we are on a little pause while we get our new project manager assigned. But I anticipate it will be done by the end of the fiscal year.
And through that kind of thing, can we do what?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
I just feel like instead of expecting people to come to us, we need to engage them more proactively. I feel like that's where there's some sort of disconnect. We say, we put all of this information out, but nobody ever sees it or takes the time. If we proactively engage and oversaturate the messaging to where we're communicating more than what they see in the past, it would help a lot, I think, with our community.
Yeah, I like that. We just hired a, at the PD, a part-time CSO. And at least from a PD standpoint, one of the things we want to do is exactly that. Try to connect a little bit more with our downtown businesses, you know, in person so they have that personal connection and they can bring up stuff, you know, whatever, right? And so just try to get them engaged more that way, too. Okay, any other thoughts on that one? If not, we've got the cybersecurity review of key infrastructure.
I had some.
Yeah.
I'd much prefer the text message than Facebook.
Okay.
Because I don't like to use it.
Yeah.
So many of my contemporaries that are older don't like to use it. So, but I do like the text. It's, it's right there. Comes right to you and it's not overlooked. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. The cybersecurity review of key infrastructure, that seems pretty self-explanatory, but I wanted to open it up for discussion with council just in case they had like specific thoughts or ideas.
Oh, I only watch Fox News. And they talk about that all the time, that the Chinese can come in and take down all our water plants or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not even so sure that it's a certain nationality, but we're in a little bit of a risk if that SCADA thing doesn't have cybersecurity. So however that looks is what it would mean to me.
Okay.
And CISA does have that free service available that I gave you that contact for that individual. I'm looking forward to see what, how they can help us.
Yeah, I will reach out for sure. Yeah.
Can I add just a little bit to that? Quite a few years ago, we did, I want to say four years ago, we did a WEA study. And they pointed out a lot of different things that we needed to do in relationship to our water plant. We've added some gates, done some other things. We also have, have a project in this, for this fiscal year, is to upgrade our SCADA system. That upgrade's going to happen the week of April 1st through the 7th. So that's already been looked at. We've had our integrator record, and that's what they do. And so that's going to happen here soon and will be online. So.
Does that include wastewater treatment and water in plant, inbound?
It's, it is the water system only. When the wastewater, because the wastewater plant is so old, it doesn't have the SCADA like it, like the water plant. But when the plant gets built, it'll have that same interface. So.
Thank you. All right, that's a good one. Any other thoughts on that one before we move on? Not seeing it. Okay. Economic strength, we've got two on here. Saniam Feed Store, which the city owns, and Old City Hall. Let's start with Saniam Feed Store. Well, I can, I can let you know that we've been working on this. So some of you already know, we've got some people who are interested in potentially starting or putting their business in there. They currently have a business in Lebanon right now. So we met with them again today. And they are expressing more interest in seeing what needs to be done on their end internally as far as any upgrades that might need to be made in order for them to start being operational in there. It will, you know, if it works out, it will be a little bit longer process before we actually get somebody in there. But I have been working on that. So I do think it's important as well because we don't want that city in vacant. And we own that now, and it's at a very important location right there on Festival Street. So any other thoughts or questions on that?
Madam Mayor, may I? Oh, Chelsea, are you going to say something finally?
Go ahead.
Oh, you go. I was just wondering, are they interested in being tenants or are they interested in purchasing?
That discussion has not come up yet. I think on their end, they're wanting to see what it might cost for them to do some remodeling in there. And based on that, once we see those numbers, as far as staff is concerned, it will kind of give us an idea of what we can do or what we want to do. And so we're still at that, that phase. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm, if I glossed over, I apologize. I've been up since 3 o'clock in the morning. But was there a timeframe that you had mentioned? Or do you have something in mind for this with the potential?
So.
Renters or the renovations that are necessary?
Yes. So we want somebody in there as soon as possible. However, just Cecily and I and Adam were talking about this today. And it's like, it just really depends what they can bring to the table because that will be dependent on what we can do as far as, you know, money that we put into it. So we were thinking that best case scenario is probably about a year. Worst case scenario would be one to three years. Just really depends on what they can bring.
So following up?
Yeah.
Is there like a timeframe on?
Like next steps?
Yeah, like, so you have 60 days to figure this out. And each one of you have to come with some sort of, what are, you know, instead of just like, we're hanging.
Right. We don't have any specific timeframe that rigid. However, they're reaching out to some contractors and some people that they know. So the next steps right now is we've communicated with them, reach out to Adam as many times as it takes for you to come on over with people, contractors, to kind of check this out. So we don't have any rigid timeframe, but, but we do have some hope that they are bringing people over very soon. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? Nope. Old City Hall. What do we all want to see happen there? Any discussion on that? Any thoughts on that?
Yes, it's all about the elevator and the flooded basement. And is it worth putting any money into it? Are we better off just leveling it? And how much interest does the fire department have in?
So I can answer the fire district question. They, several years ago, were interested in purchasing that building. And the reason they stepped away from that was because of the cost. So they, as they looked into it, it was going to cost about 1.2 million for them to, to take that over and get it up to snuff. And they're like, no, we can't do that. That's too much to put into it. So.
So may I? So when it says we're going to face fines, do we have a value of the fines that we're going to face?
I wish we knew. We've been reaching out to that particular person. I wish we knew. We've been reaching out to that particular person and they have not returned that answer to us. And we've reached out several times. So we're still going to continue to try. So we get that answer for you.
I can actually step in if you want.
Oh yeah, go for it.
So the, the fines would come from the building codes division. They currently have one employee left for the entire state. And with some of the changes in the emergency housing stuff, he has stretched really thin. He gave us a year before potential fines, which is August, I believe.
I think September.
September, yeah, August, September. So we're approaching when it could start happening. When he gets caught up, there's not a lot of clarity on if we could face fines backdated by the time that he's finally able to make it to issue his inspection. But his concern is that the BCD fines aren't the biggest financial risk. It would actually be a lawsuit from ADA because we're out of compliance.
I got a question on that. So, but there's no timeframe. So the bureaucracy that's handling the fines, they don't know.
He's already tagged out the elevator. It has a red tag on it.
Right.
It's, so it's whenever they come back for their reinspection, at that point, he could issue fines?
If the building's not being used, then it still could be a fine.
Correct.
So if you close it up.
If you maintain, if you own a commercial property that has more than one floor, you have to maintain the working elevator, whether the building is closed or not. Even if we condemned it and the building still stood, we would have to maintain the working elevator.
I, I guess I'm just, I'm just having a really hard time with. I appreciate what you folks are doing to the city. But the level of the bureaucracy and the stupidity of such thing, it's just, it's overwhelming. And yeah, put that in the notes. Thank you.
So if I may, because I wasn't quite done, but that's okay. So what are we going to do with the tenant that's in there? And I'm just having a really hard time. Like, isn't there some sort of grandfathered in clause because the building's of a certain age and?
No, unfortunately, there's no grandfathering in. In the memo, you'll see that the current tenant, his lease ends at the end of April and he is not planning to stay in the building.
Okay, so what it sounds like is that there's just no other option because we're never going to have the money to fix the elevator and we're forced to fix the elevator. So we have to demo it or sell it. Is that what you're saying?
Those are the two most basic options in front of us. Yeah.
For Tim Thorstein, you have something to say?
It's very cost effective to demo and not spend the money on it. We can do lots of things with the property. We can do a food truck. We can do all kinds of things that can generate revenue for the city in that location.
Do we have an estimated cost, what it would be to demo the building?
It's right here.
I read through that last, I didn't see that.
I don't think that's included because we just got it. So it's approximately 160,000 before any necessary asbestos remediation. And we're quite confident that that will add to the costs. So I think 200,000 would be a safe bet.
I could see where we're going with this one then.
And depending on what council wants to do, I mean, let's just say worst case scenario, you got to demo it. We could always have a work session later on, if this, since this is a council goal, on, you know, what we want to do there, right? So, yeah. Any other thoughts on that before we move on?
One more, if that's okay. So is there any grants available?
So we did look into grants. The problem is the caps on those, even very high caps would not leave us with enough left over to complete the elevator renovations, all the engineering. Part of the problem is just the way that the building is constructed makes it extremely challenging to put in what's required by state law now under their elevator code. So again, 1.2 million is probably conservative at this point. And the best grant we found was 500,000 and it was not a perfect match in terms of our goals for the building versus what the grant was trying to fund. And so, and we would still face at minimum a $700,000 shortfall.
And if any of you guys have more questions about what the actual requirements are for current day, I'd be more than happy to talk to you later.
Okay, moving on, essential services. Looks like we've got two with a tie and one with five. So purchase paver and roller. I, you know, I'm just going to make a command decision here. We're going to, we're going to focus on all these because all of these are important. But this one, the purchase paver and roller has the most. So we've already heard a little bit from you all. Any other discussion on that, that you would like to see staff do at this point? We're open for any.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that purchasing the paver is probably the most important thing. You can rent a roller, you can rent the trailer, you can rent the trucks when needed, if needed. So you can go down to the rental store and just rent that for the road that you want to do. There are very complicated pavers and there are very simple pavers. And so trying to find one that's the least complicated would probably be beneficial. But I understand that it's something new, it's something innovative, it's something that not a lot of people do. But I think that if we can figure it out, we're not going to be out a lot of money. We're going to be in a savings because we're going to get our roads done for way less. So I'm very thankful that we're going to try to figure this out. I, I hope that it works because our community deserves to have roads and not be nickled and dimed with taxes to try to cover a half a mile. So, thank you.
I don't know a lot about that, but she does. And I think it sounds like, like a great innovative thing to try. And I could see other cities seeing that we were able to be successful with that and, and asking us and, and that being a great name for us. And so I'm, I'm really excited that this is going to be one of our council goals. That's great.
Would council be open to staff reaching out to other cities in the area? And I don't know, this could get complicated. I'm just, city attorney Larson had mentioned this as you were putting stickers on your stuff. But reaching out to other communities to see if we could form some sort of a sharing, cost sharing. Yeah, agreement. Yeah. I mean, we could look into it.
I think should look into it. I mean.
I, I'm not saying that.
Think outside of the box a little bit, sharing. Yeah. This is a big capital cost and, you know, we need to look at it from every possible angle.
Okay.
Thank you for making an executive decision regarding all three of those goals. Since the one that received the lowest amounts was actually something we received a grant for, which installs sidewalks for children walking to school. I appreciate you prioritizing that one as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we will be working on that. The Mountain View Road Multi-Use Path Sidewalks, that's a no brainer. Obviously, we're going to be working on that. And then as well as the wastewater treatment plant, we will be making as much progress and working towards that as we can this year. And if you have any other comments on that, I'm happy to answer any questions or staff can answer any questions. But if not, I'll move on to the next one. Infrastructure, we have the city hall east wing renovations and then the library tech upgrades. Any, any thoughts on the city hall east wing renovations? I think most, most all of you are aware that we have been working on that. We will be meeting with CSC tomorrow, I think it is, to talk about some next steps. I've started a beginning draft of RFP for all of that, request for proposal for that over there. So yeah, we're, we're moving forward on that. And that obviously it's a priority to you to have CSC in our community. It's a priority for us. So any questions on that?
Yes, what's the timeframe on that?
Huh, what did we say? It's probably if we get that RFP out soon, by the end of the summer year.
To at least commence construction, yes. I'm not sure. I can't give you an estimate on how long the finish out will take. But yeah, we're hoping to have that RFP out and have a selection made by the end of this fiscal year.
So to have the client in place, how?
Again, it's all going to depend on what they tell us is a reasonable timeline for, for doing the finish out.
Okay.
So hopefully by the end of the calendar year would be fantastic, but that's pretty aggressive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for working with them to, to bring them to our community.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, library tech upgrades.
I have some technical questions on that, since the report, the memo that was provided says that this may not be feasible due to financial and space constraints. Could you explain what challenges are facing fiscal?
We have a really tiny building. Right now, we have six public computers and that is about the, all the space that we have. We have two children's computers and those are the most heavily used and we have no more space for any of them. And then also the plugins and all of that. I am looking at grants to upgrade the three remaining that are older. But right now they're working fine. And most of the grants for technology in libraries have been pulled in the last few months. So just waiting to see what comes out and what doesn't.
And from my time on the library board, I understood that you have limited outlets. So purchasing more technology is a challenge for the library.
We have many, don't tell the fire district, we have many plugs daisy chained together right now to make the six that we have work.
Another question here, looking out in the future and what else? If we have everything we needed, with the plans for a potential new library, how big of a footprint do you need, one, number one? And number two, if the old city hall was leveled, would that be a big enough footprint for a library?
So what we are looking at for the size of city that we are and the projected growth, we would need about 10 to 12,000 square feet, which is a little over double what we have now. We do have, the architects did a feasibility study, a needs requirement in 2021, right before COVID. They literally delivered it like a week before COVID. They looked at the area near the library currently with the parking lot and Old City Hall. It would have to basically shut one of the streets down and build, building over or parking somehow over. The city hall, Old City Hall space is not big enough. The parking lot is not quite big enough. So it'd have to be combined in some way.
So Madam Mayor, so what it sounds to me like is you need some electrical upgrades to sustain the computer technology system that you have going on?
How we have it currently works, there's not really a way to upgrade our current building and the current electrical that would be financially feasible.
I guess that doesn't make sense to me. Because if you're daisy chaining electrical outlets to get the technology that you need usable, that sounds a little bit sketchy. And so I don't know why we're doing that or what needs to be done to update the electrical to not do that.
So almost all of our electrical now is, the wires are exposed along the walls and not within the walls because of the age of the building. It is, what it is, is just, I don't want to put $100,000 or more into a building if we're looking at moving and we need more space to start with. So it's working for what we have right now. It's fine as it is. It's just to add more is not necessarily feasible.
Okay, so when are we hoping? What's the timeframe that we're hoping to have another building? 10 years?
I would like to have one at least breaking ground within five years. But it all depends on what funding we can get and any donations and stuff like that.
So is this another potential situation of a building owned by the city that we're not taking care of to maximize the value of it? Where we have more costs down the road in case we want to sell it? Or we get into this predicament, you know, like why aren't we fixing the electrical in the interim to protect the value of the asset?
I don't think we're at that. We are maintaining what we need to maintain. As you'll see in the council tonight, we have a grant for something else that is upgrading in the building. It's just, it's working as it is and it's best to leave it as working and not do a very large upgrade.
I have a question regarding the seismic. I mean, the building we've discussed multiple times, that we, putting money into this building for the city is, can be a waste of taxpayer dollars because seismically it is not fit, correct? I mean.
Yeah, it is a brick building without support within the walls.
It was built as a brick building without rebar in it. Is that correct?
Yep, but most of the buildings downtown are very similar shape.
Yeah. So it's, it's not that the city's not taking care of the property. It's that the property itself is not functional for a public library for the future. So I want to understand.
Yes.
And wasn't the searching for a new property for a new library on the previous, the first round of?
And that will never stop until we are successful.
One last question about the library. When was it built?
It opened in 1969.
Thank you.
Okay, last, or the last one, aren't we desirable community? Looks like we have Weddell Bridge and downtown vacancy reduction. Let's start with Weddell Bridge. Any?
It just has to be maintained and restored.
Yeah. Yeah. It's pretty self-explanatory. We, we know that it needs to be updated. So. And then the last one, downtown vacancy reduction. What, what's everyone thinking about that there?
You know, one thing I don't like and that's more regulations.
Personally, I chose it only because I wasn't sure we were ready for a marketing plan because I don't think we could do a marketing plan until we have downtown vacancy actually addressed in town, I think. So that's why I chose it, honestly.
Any thoughts or ideas from counselors on, I mean, be creative. Any thoughts or ideas on how we can, how staff can assist with that? Or what we can do as a community to help with that?
I'm going to be the bad guy here. Brownsville, Lebanon, Albany, they all have some sort of city regulations, ordinances or something for stores that are being empty. Lebanon's downtown is hardly ever empty. They do a lot of good marketing, but I don't want regulations on people either. But we've done surveys, we've asked people, lots of people have said that they want something done with downtown. We did a great thing last year by painting and upgrading, but I think we need to do something. What that is, I don't know, but we have a lot of empty buildings that shouldn't be empty. Lots of people want to use them, but landlords aren't letting them use it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to push back a little bit on that. I don't necessarily know that landlords aren't wanting them to use it. But I think the cost to do the upgrades that are necessary to make them usable spaces are difficult to get to that. are difficult to get to that usable space. I think that startups don't have the money to invest into somebody else's building. I think there's a couple of owners that are absent. But I think if we want to be totally honest, the ones that are just sitting there probably need to be tore down, just like the old City Hall. And so what are we gonna do? We're gonna nickel and dime people with a fine until they invest a bunch of money into their storefront to upgrade it, to put somebody in there that can't afford the rent because the costs were too high to do the upgrades. So I just, I really feel like we're in a pickle.
I rented numerous commercial buildings in my life and most landlords will work with you. And if you signed a five year lease, they'll do a lot of work for you. There's lots of options. The city has benefits to new businesses. There's something that we can do to help local businesses come to downtown.
Would council be interested in maybe a work session on this? Like, you have some time to kind of maybe think about some stuff or research on your own. Would you be interested in a work session potentially?
Sure.
I got one other question.
Yeah.
Have, I've only been here for two years, but I know I've heard talks previously of counselors and city employees working with downtown owners, property owners. Where are we? Do we, do we have like a deadhead? Like, they're not willing to do anything? Or like, we have information that we're not all being told.
I guess. If I may. I hesitated to jump in here because it's not really my role anymore, but for a long time, this was pretty much one of, I beat my head against this wall quite a bit the last five years. There's a lot of different factors. Asking why a building vacant is similar to asking why a person is homeless. Usually there's a completely different story and a completely different answer for each one. And so finding one explanation for it is is really difficult. But I think there's a lot of there are some property owners that were very responsive whenever I tried to work with them. And then there were others who were incredibly difficult to get a hold of and simply didn't ever respond. Those who responded tended to have improvements made on their building and and they they found some progress. One in particular that I think really shows some hope was the building where Sugar Vibes is now. The owner of that building was very proactive in attracting tenants and making improvements to his building and finding funding to get it filled. And it's been filled. He doesn't have a vacancy problem in that building because he's been very active in filling it. However, there are other properties where the property owner simply isn't doing anything to try to fill it. And so the question is, how do we help that person do something with their building? The problem mainly is it's their building. It's what, you know, they're trying to, they they either don't want to do anything or they want to do something different and they won't, don't want anybody else in their business. I can sympathize with those feelings, but at the same time, we run into an issue where how do we actually incentivize things like this to happen? Our seat program was a good incentive, but it obviously is, there's a limit to the funding. The other thing is, is any program that you wanted to put in place, if it was focused on downtown rather than every commercial area of the city, then it could be more effective. But targeting every commercial property in the whole city makes it 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 has a tendency to dilute your successes. Whereas downtown, you want more of concentrated success because you're trying to drive physical traffic to that area and that vitality brings more people to it. So I I think Lebanon Main Street is a really good example. They've done a lot of different things to drive traffic to their main street. They have a couple of different organizations devoted toward making things happen when it comes to events and things to do in the downtown. But in the, in our current situation, it's, it's a kind of a chicken and the egg problem where you you need that vitality to bring more people in, but you need the people to bring the vitality in. So you you have to take kind of baby steps where you can. It'll, if we could, I mean, the most effective things are having a really proactive property owner and having lots of money for the city to shovel at it.
This is a topic that when I'm looking at historical documents, has been discussed since 1994 in the city of Sweet Home Downtown vacancies. So there have been vacancies that have been there for decades. So we can continue to exist like that, or we could do some things that incentivize things.
I'm in support of a work session, if if that's something that we could put together.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
And invite some of these landlords who own those properties to the work session, get their input.
Yeah, that's good.
I had one more. So when we're talking about the city of Lebanon, is it actually the city of Lebanon that's standing up these organizations? Or is it the citizens of Lebanon that are standing up the nonprofits or the downtown association or whatever? Who's doing the standing up of that for their community?
With Lebanon and many other cities, it's a combination. There's, there's usually not a silver bullet or one thing. In Lebanon's case, I believe they have a downtown association that is funded by its members and from grants that they've obtained. But they've also had a lot of cooperation from the city of Lebanon as well. I don't know exactly how that might be funded, but I would guess that some of their transient lodging tax would probably be involved because it's a, a, it's one of those. When it comes to transient lodging tax, that's the tax you pay on a hotel stay, that there's the majority of that has to be spent toward tourism related stuff. And so that's seen as kind of a tourism related thing, is putting on those events. And so I'm, again, it hasn't been a point of of research lately, but my guess is that most of Lebanon's funding is that type of funding that they've put into it. In our circumstance, we don't have the transient lodging tax level that they have there. And so it's difficult to shut to, what we do have tends to go toward the the visitor center that's run by the chamber.
I do know by a couple of city council meetings that I've gone to in Lebanon is they're spending money on marketing. They're talking about renting a space on one of those big, huge bulletin signs on Highway 20 coming in town. So they're doing really good about filling downtown, but their landlords want people in them. Plain and simple.
Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, that wraps it up. I just want to say thanks to council for all of the thoughtful discussion and ideas that you have. And I just want you all to know that staff is excited about working with you over this next year to accomplish these goals. These are great things. And so with that, I will hand it back over to the mayor.
I will wrap this meeting up at 6:28. We'll take a five minute break. And there are snacks.